...to September 24th. So, the first thing we have is a, on our agenda tonight is 38 and 44 Lakeview Street, David Eleanor Eldridge, and that's, it's an A&R for map seven lot 22 and 24.
Actually, you've got...
And that's, it's receipt of plans, but, but we could see this and have a possible vote on this tonight if it's just a simple thing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the recommendation. It's Bob Rogers with GAF Engineering. Actually, we submitted the plans at your last...
Oh, did you? Okay.
...last meeting in August. Since that last meeting, Jim Walsh and the staff in Town Hall have gone through and reviewed this A&R plan. They did find one correction that we needed to make, so we, we have a revised plan dated September 5th. So this is a parcel of land owned by the Eldridge family that has two existing homes on it. So, we are creating new lots for those two existing homes, and then we are creating two additional single-family house lots. So this plan creates a total of four new building lots. They're all larger than required for frontage and area by zoning, and they've all contain all the information regarding septic's and wells and setbacks and so forth as required in your rules and regulations for an A&R plan. So we would ask that you vote to endorse the plan this evening, and hopefully you could endorse it this evening.
Okay, all right. Jim, do you have any additional information?
Yeah, I reviewed this with Bob Francis, our Building Commissioner, and we determined that, you know, all the lots have adequate frontage on Lakeview Street. They all meet the minimum lot size for the Village zoning district. And, you know, the only thing to note is that the property on lot 22B is existing nonconforming in terms of the setback from the street. It's trying to remember what the, so the setback's supposed to be 40 feet, so they have less than 40 feet, but by nature of the approval not required, you know, that's just creating a, the property's already nonconforming in terms of that setback. But in terms of all the other setbacks, the requirement is 25 feet from the sidelines, so they meet the 25-foot setback lines. We also had our health agent look in terms of the placement of the wells and septic system, and he, you know, thought that those were adequate as well.
Any questions by any of the board members?
So, so in lot 22B, the existing...
It's just the, the distance off of the street to the home. You can, you can see the...
So that won't affect that 22A then if something goes in there? That's, that's, that would be all within code?
Correct. Yeah, 22, 22A and 24A would be the lots that would need very new homes. So that would be enforced at the time of the building permit application.
Gotcha, okay.
Anything else?
And it's already gone before conservation, where they're on the water?
No, this, we would only be going before conservation at the time when something was to be constructed.
Okay.
All right, entertain a motion.
I'll entertain a motion to take for 38 and 44 Lakeview Street to accept map seven lots 22 and 24A.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Those in favor for plan approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, all set. Do you have some plans here tonight? Do you, if we...
I believe Jim's, I believe Jim's got the my... So if you sign at the end of tonight's meeting, we could pick it up tomorrow or whatever your pleasure is.
Okay.
If you, if you normally pass it around and sign it, we'll be happy to wait.
It's just one sheet?
Uh, just have the Mylar, and then would you be able to print four sets for us?
Yes, of course, yes.
Okay. The only thing I'm missing, do you have a...
I have a Sharpie right here.
You've got a Sharpie, oh.
I mean, we could sign it right now.
That'd be great.
Yeah, if it's just the...
Start with Jan and work with...
For the four of us.
Thank you.
All right. Get you all messed up.
Today's date is...
10.
Uh, 10, no, 9.
No, it's 10.
10, 10.
9:10.
No, it's 9:10. You... 9:10. Okay, 19.
Trying to get us in trouble?
All right.
Yeah, let's not jump over just...
All right, thank you.
So we'll deliver four. We'll scan it, send you the PDF.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you. Okay, so that takes care of that. So, so the next on our agenda, uh, was the application of Nexon Energy LLC requesting a special permit and site plan review, and that was on Tremont Street and 65 Wareham Street in Carver. Do you have anything to say about that, Jim? Or just gonna...
Right, so the, they, they sent a written request for a continuance to the September 24th meeting, and so I think the board just has to vote and accept that request for continuance.
Okay, entertain a motion for a continuance to September 24th.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing on the application of Nexon Energy LLC.
To Sept-, uh, 7 o'clock, September 24th.
To September 24th?
Yeah.
Okay, to September 24th.
Yes.
I'll second that.
So you have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, the next we have an application of Bayberry Dunes LLC requesting a site plan review, and this is located on North Main Street and Lilian Way in Carver. And what do we have going on with this, Jim?
Right, they needed some additional time to respond to comments from Fuston O'Neil, our review engineer, and so they requested a, in writing, a continuance to the September 24th meeting.
Okay. Okay.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing on the application of Bayberry Dunes LLC to September 24th at 7:30?
7 o'clock.
7 o'clock, okay.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the next, and I have to read a public hearing notice. All right, in accordance, this is the public hearing notice, in accordance with the provisions of the Town of Carver zoning bylaw, the Carver Planning Board will hold a public hearing on September 10th, 2019 at 7 o'clock, and the Carver Town Hall Meeting Room 1 on the application of the Town of Carver Police Station Advisory Committee requesting the site plan review pursuant to Section 3100 of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at 3 Center Street on Assessors Map 103 Parcel 11-C-E containing 67,257 square feet and a portion of map 103 Lot 11 in Carver, Mass., including a carport and a 2,400 square foot accessory building. The project will entail construction of a new driveway access from Center Street to a rear fence police parking lot containing 29 parking spaces, the widening of existing library, exist, existing driveway into a two-way driveway, the construction of 18 new public parking spaces on the southerly side of the new police station. The project will also include development of a new septic system, drainage system, and water service connection to the existing town well on site. Also, a generator, radio tower, and dumpsters will be installed. The project is located in the Village zoning district. Any person interested and wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the plan is on file at the Town Clerk's office and may be reviewed during normal business hours. Carver Planning Board, Bruce Mackey, Chair. The published dates were August 23rd and August 30th of 2019. All right, this finally made it to the planning board.
It has been a process, that's for sure.
So, good evening, everyone.
Good evening. My name is Bill Harriman. I'm the chairman of the Police Station Advisory Building Committee. I'm going to say very little, I'm going to turn it over to a couple of fellows who are going to speak on behalf of the committee on this project. But we look forward to your, to your acceptance of this project. Badly needed, been in the, the hopper for a long time in town, and finally, I think we're going to get it off the ground. The committee has been meeting over the last year or so regularly. We've identified the site, we've identified the features of the building that we're looking for, so we're really in a good place right now to get this moving. Tentatively, we, we are scheduled to go out to bid on October 2nd. Open those bids in mid-November, so that's where the project stands right now. Before I turn it over to our two consultants, I want to just mention the committee, just so you're familiar with who, who the committee is. Myself as the chairman, Chief Doofle is on the committee, he's here tonight. David Robertson is on the committee. Our Town Administrator, Michael Milonowski, is on the committee. Dave Seendorf, our operations and manager, management guy. John DeLipiscoli, and Officer Brian Berryalt, who's a sergeant with the Carver Police Department. So we have a very diverse committee, but it's also a committee that's worked a lot together. So we, we have done a couple of projects together, and we think we have, have had some success with those projects, so. So with that said, and that groundwork, I will turn it over to Nathan Ketchel from GGD, and Tom Linden from Linden Associates in Berlin, Connecticut.
Good evening, I'm Tom Linden from Linden Landscape Architects, the site planners, landscape architects for the project. I will review the layout of the plan and how it fits on the site, Nate will talk about drainage and septic and utilities. So, as everybody knows, we're, we have Lot 11, 11 and 11C, south of the library. It's approximately 14 acre parcel back into the woods. On Center Street, in the Village District, as you had said, so we have, we have the zoning requirement chart where we meet all of the zoning requirements, front yard, side yard, rear yards. There is one error in my own zoning chart, that the building is actually 32 and 1/2 feet tall to the peak of the roof, and the requirement is 30, but the building's 32 and 1/2 feet tall. So what I want to do is orient you to the site and show you the proposed over the existence, so you can get an idea of where, where everything actually sits. So on this plan, hopefully you can see it from there, this is the proposed layout. Everything in green is what's existing, so this is the one-way library driveway down back, the existing library parking lot, the playground is there, the edge of the tree line as it goes into the woods is right here. If you're familiar, the mister is right there. So this is where the police station is going on this piece of property. The entrance off of Center Street lines up with the driveways to that building on the corner, something that the police wanted to do so that they could get straight out if they needed to and not have to come through the Center Street intersection as an extra way for them to be able to get onto Main Street. Main Street's down here. What else, let me go... So that's where we are on the site, facing Main Street, facing right at the intersection of Center and Main Street.
Almost directly across from the fire station?
Actually, on that very first plan that I showed, it shows driveway apron to the fire station, which is, there's the intersection of Main Street, the driveway apron's right about here for the fire station. So the way, the way the site works is the entrance for the police only off of Center Street is the driveway in to their enclosed rear yard. The entire rear yard is fenced in for their vehicles, their equipment, and their use only. There will be a gate across the driveway, there's signage, do not enter authorized vehicles only. Just on the outside of the fence, this little thing here is a turnaround in case somebody were to go in and they can't get through the fence, they didn't know what they were doing, they can turn around and get back out. The main building, the police drive in, sally ports are in the rear so that they can drive into the sally ports, they can come back out and make the turn and circle to go in and out. Dumpster pads are at this end so that a truck can come in and either back into the dumpster pads, or if it's a front loading, they make a motion like that, they can get in, pick them up, and get back out. The outbuilding is storage, storage usage, it has a overhead door and a couple of man doors for the different things that are going on in there for their storage. The impound lot off of here is separately fenced in for vehicles and evidence and things like that. The, at this end of the parking lot, because there's only one entrance in and out for police vehicles, this piece that goes out to the rear library parking lot is a secondary emergency-only exit. So if something happened, the police have a second way to get out. It will be gated and locked and only used in an emergency if they needed to. That's their way in and out. The one-way library parking lot driveway, we've expanded into two-way traffic and added parking on the police side of the building, the main entrance to the building being in this corner, so this is where the public would park to be able to come to the police station. And it also would be able to service the library by adding all this additional parking back there, where now there's only the eight or so that are, six or so that are back there. So the public can come in off of Main Street, park, or come in through the library and park, and access the public portion of the building right here in the front. The police do their thing over there. Other things on the site plan, the radio tower and generator locations have shifted a little bit from what's on the plans that we submitted. We're still working on getting the project out to bid. It basically, they slid 16 feet towards the library from where they are on the plan. They were snug up against the outbuilding, they've just moved this way, and it's beyond my scope. It's something to do with the cost of the wiring for the antenna, to get the antenna as close to the building, save as much money. It's phenomenally expensive per foot. So that just slid a little bit. Transformer pad is inside of the fenced area, electrical feed here, you'll see that on the, on the utility plan, and I'll let Nate go through that, the water and the septic and storm services. The other thing that has changed on this application to the plan that currently we're working on that will, as Bill said, will be going out to bid, this plan that you have says this is a solid screen fence. Because of cost, it's changed that it will be a solid fence on the library side, the backside facing the woods is now chain link. Those are the, the locations of the radio tower and the generator and that fence is the, is the major thing, the only major things that have changed on that. Sight lighting. There's ballard lights near the entrance, there's, I believe, lights on the buildings, but the parking lot itself is lit with 18-foot poles, LED lighting. At the technical review meeting last week, they asked for the point diagram to show, to show that, it's impossible to see, but we've submitted that to the town for review. And there's your utility plans. Do you want to go from this one?
I'll use that color. Good evening, everyone. My name is Nathan Ketchel, I am with Garcia, Gluskin, De Souza. We did the, basically the utility engineering for the project, including septic, septic and drainage, and then coordination of the water and electricity and sight lighting. I guess, starting simple water line, the project is proposing to connect to the water service that was extended over to the fire station. That line does currently run right through the property around the north side of the playground, and then crosses where the existing library driveway is, and then goes across Main Street. So we will be intercepting that line on two ends to continue to provide water to the fire department, running it around underneath the, the visitor parking lot, and then reconnecting in the island at the intersection of Center and Main Street, and as well providing a connection for the police station through the back portion here and into the building. There is no natural gas or LP proposed for the site, everything will be electric through VRF and whatever kind of systems are available for HVAC. Because the building is on septic, we did look at this with, with Kevin, who I believe is reviewing this, basically everything will come out, the north side of the building, go to a septic tank, and then a solar absorption system to the northwest of the building. As well, because there is a sally port, there are floor drains associated with those areas, so there will be a garage waste holding tank on the site. It is monitored in the sense that there are float controls for when the system is starting to fill up, warning the owner that they do need to have it pumped out. As Tom had indicated, there are sight lights throughout the visitor and library parking, as well as in the rear of the building in the police parking lot, as well as the driveways, the ballad lighting along the visitor walkway as well. There are, we are proposing that two new pole, excuse me, two new utility poles be planted in place of the existing ones, they don't meet current Verizon or, or electric utility standards, so those will have to be replaced. One will serve as the primary electrical riser pole, which goes back to the transformer, and then into the building's electric room. The other pole will provide the communication services into the building. So while we obviously have storm water on the site, we're proposing to collect all runoff from the new parking lots, driveways, and what have you, put them to deep sump catch basins, put them through hydrodynamic water quality structures, then through a drain manhole with a sluice gate prior to being discharged to underground infiltration systems. Now, on this property, given that there is a, the entire site is basically in a Zone 2 water supply protection area, as well that has a, I'm sorry, interim wellhead protection area, with a Zone 1 associated with a public water supply well that's further up to the, to the east. That, the limit of that Zone 1 basically comes to the back of the parking lot, or the back of the library parking lot, where the water treatment and, and storage building is.
There's the circle.
There's the well. So, basically, this jog here is this one right here, so we're well outside of the Zone 1, but we were looking at whether or not we could do a, a surface pond for that, however, given the location of the Zone 1, we didn't want to do any disturbing to the, the Zone 1. So where everything is underground, we have two systems that are dealing with parking lot runoff, all of those have the, wherever there are inlets in, we do have the water quality structures, followed by the sluice gates, so that in the event that there is a spill in the parking lot, they can shut down the drainage system and isolate it, hopefully before there is a spill that goes into the ground and not be as costly to remediate in that event. There is a, another infiltration system underground at the front of the building that wouldn't be seen, that's basically picking up roof drainage, yeah, picking up roof drainage. The system, or this system right here does pick up the east half of the building, try to send down spout. I think that's essentially it. We do have, so we do have, basically everything that is retained or falls on the site is retained on the site. These systems are sized to handle the 100-year storm event. This catch basin down here, because we've, because we've lost the catchment that was contributing to the drain, the existing municipal drainage down in the southwest corner, we are adding a catch, or replacing the catch basin that's here, and just allowing that to flow without any attenuation, just because there is the, the available credit for that, over the existing condition. I think that's about it for utilities. Well, a couple of lights proposed for the sign that will be put out on Main Street for the station.
Okay, thank you. Maybe before we do the questions from the planning board, Jim, is there anything that you would like to add to, to this?
Um, I know, a lot of the information we received today, but we did add, there's some outstanding issues based on the letter from Fuston O'Neil, but they're more or less minor issues, so we put conditions into the proposed decision, you know, that would help the board, you know, we capture those at some point in the future.
Okay. We don't have a decision for this tonight, do we?
I have a draft here, but one of the things I did not include were the fire department conditions.
Okay.
So what I would do is if, you know, maybe the board reviewed this and then approved what we, you know, just take a look at the conditions, and if we need to make any modifications, we could do that, then I could also then add the fire department, and then we could take a vote at the next meeting in terms of, you know, approving the, you know, the conditions for the project.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Andy, do you have any, anything to add?
I know the applicant in the board really hasn't had a chance to review the letter that Fuston O'Neil put together, we just issued it this evening, but as Jim mentioned, most of the comments were pretty minor in nature, mostly clerical. The one item that I did want to point out is we have some slight concerns with attorney movements with the exit of the public parking lot as it comes out onto the, basically the intersection of Main Street and... intersection of Main Street and Center Street there. Essentially, that, as you know, is a exit-only currently. And then, as a part of this project, we're proposing to make that two-way. It's kind of a, just the existing geometry of that intersection is a little odd, and doesn't, isn't the best for site distances. I don't know if that's necessarily something that can be completely addressed as part of this application, but I guess we did suggest that the applicant take a look at potentially maybe adjusting the orientation of the proposed two-way street as it comes into that intersection to improve what they can on this property. And if the town wishes to look at that intersection further, you know, on, on their own, I think that, that's probably the approach that should be taken, whether, you know, restriping within that intersection is warranted.
All right, thank you. Any questions by any of the board members? I would just like to ask one to start off, is the traffic that usually goes in back of the library, the entrance to the library is in the rear on the right-hand side, and then it usually goes across the back and, and then down the left side, and then goes out to the street. Is that traffic now in back of the library going to become two, two ways also, or is it going to be one-way in back of the library? Is it going to be the same as it, as it was? It doesn't show the library there, so I was just wondering if, it does show two-way traffic going up the right-hand side of the proposed police station, so I was just wondering how that was going to go.
It's a little bit small to see, but, so, Meadow Brook is here. You come into, the beginning of that parking lot is chopped off of this, but you come into the parking that's on this side of the library. You have the big lot in the back, and the one-way down here. So, are you talking about this one?
Yes. Usually, when I go to the library, I go up the street that's on the right-hand side, then take a left into the parking lot. That's usually, I believe, just the one-way, or?
Correct.
So, it's supposed to be.
You're asking whether or not.
Is it, is it, is it going to continue to be one-way, or is that going to be two-way traffic also there?
It's kind of under discussion with the town as to what they want to do with everything in the town, when we looked at the whole town campus idea. It's striped angled as if it's one-way, that way, and everything. I've never been here and not seen somebody come back out this way. And it's dimensionally, it can be perpendicular, it can be perpendicular ninety-degree parking and function as a parking lot. It's kind of odd that it's on an angle to make everybody go, or want everyone to go that way.
Right.
Just Bruce, today, we were at the site before Tom got here, with Davis, Stephen Tom, and John Woods, and throughout the whole day, we saw people going in the opposite directions, even though it's striped, even though it's designed that way, people still doing free flow.
A lot of posts and put away if you're not answering.
So, I mean, that's kind of what you have there, is that it does operate both ways.
Will there be arrows put down, like on the pavement, to show that traffic can go two ways?
Yes.
How do you plan on doing that?
There will be striping on this.
Okay.
And arrows, yes.
And directional arrows, okay. I was just wondering about that. I know, probably, under the tech review, pretty much everything's been looked at here.
Right. That wasn't really raised under tech review, but I think that's something that, you know, the town would take a look at, say, you know, once that two-way roadway, this driveway goes in, then it would make sense to restripe the parking lot area of the library, you know, so that it matches up with, with, proposed in the back over here with the, I guess it's existing, with the, the way the layout is on the far part. But then, and then the initial section, when you're first coming off the street, maybe that could be restripped, so that it's perpendicular parking versus angle parking.
Okay. Any other board members have any questions?
I agree, because that's confusing. When you come in that street, everyone goes in an angle. If you try to get out and someone comes in, everyone, sort of, they would just perpendicular instead of diagonal.
Right.
I, I just had one question on the height of the lights in the new proposed parking.
Yes.
How is that, that height in relationship to the existing lights in the parking lot, library parking lot?
The number of times I've been over there, I've never paid attention to how tall those poles are. They're, they're not super tall.
Yeah. Maybe fourteen feet.
Just wondering, like, you know, the new one's going to be?
Eighteen?
Eighteen.
Overwhelming compared to the ones that are up there now, that's all. Because I assume those will be on twenty-four, well, they'll be on all night.
I'd also, you might want to talk about the light, the two fixtures we're putting on there, just straight downward light, you know?
Overspill?
Yeah. The, the, the point diagram, if you, if you look at that, you have to look at it closely, because there's a million little points, and they're tiny. It cuts off almost immediately behind the pole. It goes from, you know, the typical four, five, six-foot candles, and immediately behind that light, not ten feet away from that light, it's zero. So, that's, that's what that diagram is for, so that the town can see that and know how the lighting works. It cuts off almost automatically behind the poles.
Yeah, we did receive that photometric plan and did a review, and didn't have any, any issues with what was proposed there.
And that's always an issue with the lighting and runway strip.
We can look at what the height of the existing ones are. I mean, what it would mean is if you go down to a fourteen-foot, you're adding X number more poles to, to provide that.
I know that's short over there, that's.
We can, we can take a look at what the, the height is and report it back to the, to the board.
Thank you.
Kevin, do you have any questions?
Well, I imagine if we could police the traffic on that area that's going to be one-way, we might be able to go forward. But it does sound like we probably should see to it that that is going to be clearly one-way, or it's going to be designed so that it can be two-way. Don't want any accidents.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just to point out, one of the conditions I did add, it was, it was based on Andy's concern, was to put in a condition to take a look at that further, you know, prior to the getting a building permit, just to, to take a look at it, consider any design changes, and necessarily make those changes to the, to the way the driveway and the streets align.
But the emergency, the, the quickest way for the officers to get out is going to be right onto Center Street, right? So, that's not going to be a, a concern back there.
Jim, do you have any questions or comments?
No, as, as Andy pointed out, we just got the memo tonight. This is my first time seeing it. That was a super thorough presentation, and this is a huge project, so I would request that we, we do hold off on voting till next time, so I and we can look at this and the memos further.
All right. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone that has anything more to say for the project? Anyone here tonight? I'm seeing none. Any other people that have any other questions or comments? We don't see anybody coming forward, so.
Mr. Chair, I guess, one question regarding the height of the building. I guess the zoning table did say thirty, matching the, you know, requirements within that zone, and currently thirty-two and a half is proposed. I guess, is the applicant planning on continuing with the thirty-two and a half? I'm assuming no building, you know, architectural changes are proposed. So, I guess that's something that would need to include, you know, as a variance for the height of the structure within that zone.
We can also just consult with our building commissioner on taking a look at it and having him evaluate the, the height, to see how he determines what the height is.
Right.
So, then he can, then they can have.
Is, is the thirty-two and a half to the top of the?
Thirty-two feet is to the peak of the roof, yes. So, if it's calculated a different way, I just, that's the peak of the roof.
Right. So, I'll, I'll have him take a look at it and see what the actual height is, and then if, if it requires a variance.
And Jimmy, you said the other thing is we just, we need to get the fire department's input on this?
They provided the input, but I got so focused on trying to incorporate Andy's comments into it, I forgot to add the fire department. So, I have to just add those comments in as well.
All right. So, we, we could close the public hearing on this tonight, although if some of the members want to review the plans, they may have some questions. Would that be acceptable to close the public hearing tonight? If we have questions for next week?
In past practice, I was told you can't ask further questions once the public hearing is closed, so I would request a continuance.
Continue the public hearing? Is, is there a reason that this needs to be? So, we could do two things tonight. We could continue the meeting, we could approve, well, we could close the public hearing at our next meeting, and then we could approve the conditions. Or we could close the public hearing tonight and approve the conditions at our next meeting. Is, is there a reason why we can't do the second?
So, if you wanted to, say, someone wanted to do some tweaking on the language, so you may, you may want to keep the public hearing open. So that that way, you know, any comments from the planning board members, we could take that into consideration and, you know, make further tweaks to the, to the decision, if needed.
All right. So, do you have anything else to say?
Just a couple of, just a couple of points. On the height of the building, the fires, well, we did the fire station, we did a bylaw change to allow a forty-foot height, and I believe that covers the area. And I, I'm not specific, but I believe it does. I know you were talking about the height of the.
I do remember that.
So, that should be allowable. The other thing is, is I said on the front end, and again, not to rush you, but we're going out to bid on October second. So, if we could kind of definitively know, we have your blessing by that time, it certainly would be helpful.
So, just to pick up on that, the way the market is right now, is there's a couple contractors that are looking for work, and we're trying to beat a couple other projects out to bid, because the first one on the street in this price range is going to get the best price, because multiple contractors are hungry. So, that's why we're trying to, you know, go out to bid, get final packages together. They're already in the process of producing those, so, you know, if you want to close your hearing tonight and then deal with any questions the next meeting, that's, that's fine, that's great. But the sooner we get to, to move this along, it just allows us to hopefully get better pricing for the entire project, to, to, because this is going to, the project is going to have some cost overruns already, just because the market is higher than when we originally started. So, you know, I, I guess one of the things that we're all looking for tonight, too, to see, you know, is there any major issues that anybody's seen in this? Because, you know, I don't want to have to have our engineers just wait for two weeks, you know, without having some direction from the board. So, if you do want to close the hearing, at least that, that moves things forward. Obviously, members can still share comments, and that can be done, but the public would not be able to come in and add additional information to this. And that's what we're just trying to, you know, trying to look out in the taxpayer's best interest.
All right. I think.
I don't mind making a motion to close the public hearing.
I think we could, I think we could close the public hearing tonight. I don't see anything major that, that, that we're going to do here. I mean, if you want time to look at the plans, we could speak to Jim, and we, we do have your conditions in our packet. We could take a look at that, so we could approve the conditions at our next meeting. Does that sound okay?
I'm, I'm not comfortable closing it, because in the past, I personally have been remanded for asking follow-up questions and, and bringing information before the board after the public hearing was closed. So, no, I don't see anything major, but because this was all just given to us tonight, we should do our due diligence to look at it. And going out to bid October second, our next meeting is September twenty-fourth, so giving us two weeks to physically read what we were all given tonight should not prohibit them from going out to bid and have any detrimental effect.
How does anybody feel about that?
I guess, a point of clarification, I guess, is when we close the public hearing, we can still talk and make comments on what's presented. It's just that the public can't.
Again, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
I mean, I, just, just to address what, what Jen had said, so, we can still talk about it, and you can still make comments. It's the public can't make comments, because the public part of that has been closed. Is Jim, am I correct in that? We can still talk, and Jen had some comments.
Right. The board still can deliberate, because the board's going to be, the board can close the public hearing, and then you're delivering on the information presented to you, and then also your interpretation of, you know, of the, everything. So, and then formulate a, a motion to, you know, move it forward with either approval or, or not.
Even if the, someone from the board brings in new information, that, that doesn't, as long as it.
The board's different than the.
As long as it's within the parameters of the project.
Yeah, yeah.
As long as it's in the plan and everything, bring that in. It's, you know, for somebody six thousand feet away, if it isn't part of the plan, then that's, that's not part of the plan, even in a public hearing.
Because like Jim had said, I, I don't, I mean, I think the major, any major concerns would have brought up, been brought up by Andy, and I think that the one was the parking, the turnaround for the parking. Hold on that.
So, there's a motion on the floor to close the public hearing?
So, there is a motion to close the public hearing. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
So, we have motion to second to, to close the public hearing. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
So, where does that stand? Do we need a?
Jim, did you vote in fir- affirmative?
Affirmative.
Okay, so three to one. So, the, by majority vote, you close the public hearing.
Okay. Okay, so, we will, we can review the, the conditions, and then approve the conditions at our next meeting. And if we, if you have any other comments, then, then we'll incorporate the, those comments into the conditions.
And again, Mr. Chairman, if there's any comments, the sooner we get those, the better, because the engineers are trying to put together this whole big packet. Do a QAQC, it takes more than a week to put that together and make sure you know errors, because if there are errors, that's how you get change orders in the project. So, having a few weeks for us to put together the project is what we're working on right now.
Okay, so, we still have time to review. We still have the two weeks for, for the board members to review what we have. And I didn't see any, anybody come forward from, for public comment, so. So, anyway, that's, that's the way it is. So, we've closed the public hearing, and we'll, we'll approve the conditions at our next meeting. And thank you very much. It's nice to see this project finally coming before the planning board.
We want to thank you for your time and your consideration, and we appreciate it. We want to get this moving, so.
I, I know.
And I understand consternation, where you've just seen this tonight. I, I get that. But this has been vetted pretty well on our side.
Yeah.
Again, we want, want you to be satisfied also.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for helping, please.
Sure. Okay, we have, uh, an ac- application from Nexon Energy, and let me read the... Uh, let me see if we can find it here. Public hearing notice. So this Rochester Road.
Can you make my copy, Mr. Chairman?
Let me see, I think I have it, okay, I think I have it here, it is, I have it, thank you. Okay, so this is the public hearing notice, uh, in accordance with the provisions of the Town of Cava zoning bylaw, the Cava Planning Board will hold a public hearing on September 10th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Cava Town Hall, Meeting Room 1, on the application of Nexon Energy LLC requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections 3100, 3580 dot 60, and 5300 of the Cava zoning bylaw located at zero comma zero R and 60 Rochester Road, Cava, Mass. Assessors map 92 lots 14, 15, 16, 17, 20, and 22 to allow the construction and operation of a dual-use large-ground mounted solar photovoltaic installation and pertinent equipment and interconnection in accordance with the solar bylaw in a residential agricultural. Any persons interested and wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the plan is on file at the planning department and may be reviewed, may be reviewed during normal business hours. Cava Planning Board, Bruce Mackey, Chair. Cava, uh, report of published dates, August 23rd and August 30th, 2019. Good evening, Sarah.
Good evening, board members. For the record, Sarah Sterns with Fields and Thomas, and Ian Ward, Agricultural Consultant, for these projects with Nexon. We, um, hope to be able to catch Mr. Sinclair up at our next hearing, but thought that we would go ahead and give our opening presentation for this project, since the board hasn't, um, seen or heard about it yet. As Bruce said, this is a dual-use, uh, solar cranberry project. Not all that dissimilar to another project we're reviewing simultaneously, although, um, much smaller, on a much smaller scale, is the Nexon Tremont Street project that we're, that's currently under review. Similarly, it's made up of three properties owned by three separate landowners. This is what we're calling the Shores Property, Mr. Flores is here tonight. Um, the Perry Property, Mr. Perry's here tonight, and this is, um, the third property is owned by the Wainio's. So, um, again, growers kind of coming together to come up with a project that, um, helps everybody out in terms of sustaining their farms and creating renewable energy, um, under the SMART program. So, uh, much like other projects that you've heard about and reviewed, dual-use, um, it is the elevated panels spaced significantly further apart than a conventional array to allow the continued cultivation of the farmland beneath, and in this case, cranberries. The intent of the SMART program for this dual-use component is to keep the agricultural component of the farm as the first priority. Um, and this is a way to diversify income for growers that are, um, riding this roller coaster of the cranberry industry. Um, and we've talked about this before, but, um, as a condition of the dual-use program, the farm must stay in production. So, um, to show the, the site plan that you have, um, it's kind of the same orientation with, um, Shores, Perry, Wainio, and kind of give an idea of what the surrounding area is. This is a significant wetland area, um, at the rear or eastern, um, portion of the site. Rochester Road kind of, um, encircles, um, the western border, um, and then more agricultural land to the south, and...
How far down Rochester Road is this again?
Um, this is, it's about number sixty is the number that we're using for where the, um, main access to the Wainio shop is. Does that help you?
Mr. Shores, how far down on the left is it?
Alright, 24 Rochester Road will be right about here.
And sixty is here.
And sixty is up here.
Okay.
So past Ediville?
Mm-hmm.
It's about the sixth house, behind the sixth house, up from, uh, Salt Bay Street.
Okay.
We'll go visit it.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Hopefully you'll join us.
No, no, I'm just trying to, I'm putting it into perspective where it is.
Right.
The, the kids also, uh, sometimes sell Christmas trees, right?
That's my daughter, yes.
Okay, alright, so yeah, I know where it is.
That's it.
That's it, then I know where it is.
Alright.
Good, good little plug there, right?
Yeah. Um, so you can see from this plan, the significant wooded areas and additional bogs and wooded areas surrounding it. And also, what's nice about this area is that all of these lots have, many of these lots have significant woods on their own property. And again, it will help when we go to visit the site to really see, this doesn't reflect well on the two-dimensional plans, but the grade change between, um, the homes along Rochester Road and everything that's at bog grade significantly lower. So, um, it will definitely help us all to, um, understand it and envision it, taking a walk out there. I would strongly recommend it. But, um, as part of that, um, we did include, we've spoken to all of the neighbors who live, um, along the side of Rochester Road, and included the, um, affidavits to provide the reduced setback as part of the dual-use design. So we've talked at length with, um, the folks in this area. And again, the panels are shown on the bogs, it's not all of the bogs in the area, just the, um, the pieces that are selected as part of this plan. Um, and again, it all really makes more sense once we walk out there, so hopefully we can schedule that tonight as well. So we prepared a filing for recycling review, special permit application and compliance with the bylaw. Similarly to our other Nexon project, there are a couple of minor plan requirement waiver requests as part of that, um, if they're necessary, but they're listed on the form, and I'm sure Andy will take a look at those. We have been working with the landowners, again, similarly to our other projects, to update these plans, um, beyond what was submitted to the board to make sure that the panels are laid out, um, in a way that still allows cultivation and area for harvest. And actually, I printed one of those. We have a, our updated plans are in progress, so I'm just sharing those with, um, Fussin' O'Neill, but just to give you an idea, similarly to what you've seen before, we've just sort of carved out areas along the edges in, in the specific spots that are used for, primarily for harvest. Um, and Ian has helped on that front, working with the landowners to make sure that that's, those areas are respected and the panels are kept clear of that. Fussin' O'Neill is in the midst of their review, we haven't gotten a memo yet, but, um, we'll continue to work with them through Jim to flush that out and make sure that any of their comments or concerns are addressed as part of the process. We have been working with Deputy Chief Jermaine on this project. Typically, we work with Jesse Boyle, but he is actually in a butter now to this project, so he has stepped back, and Eric Jermaine has done a review for us. He's taken a ride out and provided, um, a preliminary memo regarding access and, um, battery storage, equipment area access, and just sort of their typical things that they work, that they look for, and, um, would like added to the plans or updated. So we will certainly address those comments along with the peer reviewers when, um, received. Fencing and vegetative screening is proposed, and that was developed, working just one-on-one with all of the neighbors and asking, you know, what would work best in their particular, uh, location, and again, we can look at that when we're out there. We'll just bring the plan and show what we've discussed with them and what has resulted from those discussions. That's basically it, I know we've had this conversation before on other sites, so it's very similarly laid out. Underground electrical conduit where we can, um, some of it will be above-ground, um, overhead wires, um, with poles, and we can, um, note that when we do our walk as well.
Do we have a number on the poles and, and, and a height on the panels?
The panel height is, um, done in conjunction with the, um, SMART program agricultural use adder. So these are also the single-tracking panels, um, so they'll be in motion. Um, and the height requirements for that are a minimum of ten feet, um, on the low end, right?
Ten, ten feet at the axis.
Mm-hmm.
Tracks from there.
What, what's, what's the degree that they go up? Do you have that? I, I don't, I, you know what I mean?
Back to you on that.
Hmm?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, I didn't know how much they move, you know what I mean, that's all. Not that that, not that that's a concern.
Yeah, we can-
Because then you can take that into consideration, the highest that it's gonna go up-
Yes.
For your height.
Right.
But it's, but ten is gonna be the axis height.
That's the state, state matter.
No, I'm just, I'm curious, uh, you know, how much the degree comes up, of course, you know, because it's gonna be different winter opposed to summer.
Yep, in terms of visual, yeah. And most of the woods, um, along the, um, abutting properties are evergreen, but, um, again, you know, do we want to add fencing, do we want to add supplemental plantings? All of that is, you know, we were happy to do either, both in some cases.
I'm just, again, I'm just thinking to myself, are the panels gonna be raised higher in the wintertime when there's less vegetation, or are they gonna be lower? Because that would be, that would ultimately be really cool if they, you know what I mean, if they were more perpendicular in the winter.
Well, it's through, I mean, throughout the course of the day.
Yeah.
They're just following the sun essentially, constantly.
I don't think they're really gonna move too much, though, in the winters.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I'm thinking, that's a good thing.
Right, right, just because the sun is at a different-
Right. Pretty far away, it's not gonna help all that much.
Yeah, so we can, um, we'll get an answer for you on that from Nexon.
Alright, there you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a degree of angle.
Sure.
And, and poles, a number of poles, because no matter what, you know Will's gonna ask that.
Yeah, no, that's fine, and that was one of the other reasons we decided to, um, request a continuance for the other hearing, because if you remember from our last conversation, he had a number of questions like that, and without him here, we didn't want to present the answers to his questions.
We gotta have the electrical guy on board.
Absolutely, um, for sure. So that, it's a little bit in flux at the moment, so, um, you know, we'll continue to sort that out, um, as we proceed.
So there's access around the entire three parcels, and that's what, um, uh, Chief Jermaine is going over with you?
Yes, um, so much like any project on these cranberry bogs, here, there are no new roads produ- um, proposed, so it would be reuse of the existing bog roads. And, um, I, I believe his letter, the first sentence was, "The proposed project does appear to have a sufficient access road network to allow for emergency vehicle access." So, um, we'll, you know, we talked to them throughout this entire process, so we will ensure that they're happy with it. He'll probably take another ride out, um, and, you know, make sure that the gates are in the appropriate places. If they would like those tweaked, we'd be happy to do that, so.
Yeah, they may, may need to tweak some of the, the roads for their apparatus to get around safely, right?
Yeah, right. Um, but they're used to driving off-site and they get to use some of their cool vehicles, right?
Oh, yeah.
So they've been extremely helpful, as always, and got right out there, and we appreciate their review, and I'm sure that, um, Andy will touch base with them or Jim, um, and we'll get, we'll get all the questions answered, and we'll, just as we typically do, um, for our supplemental response, where we update the plans and, you know, prepare a memo that responds to both Cava Fire and Fussin' O'Neill together. It's just a streamlined way to handle it, and then everything's together for the record.
And then just one more question, do, do we have, um, dual-purpose, uh, in existence? Where this is, where we're, where this will be like the second one going forward, um, uh, with, uh, three people using it? Do we, do we know if we have one where they have, um, how it's working and, and if, not yet?
There's one other that was approved, um, not filled yet, and not-
And I don't mean necessarily here in Cava, I mean altogether throughout, you know, the country.
UMass has one.
UMass has one, okay. It'd be, it'd be interesting to get some of the feedback on it, you know what I mean? Because obviously, I'm hoping it's all gonna be positive.
Right, so that's, that brings up a good point. I, I should have mentioned that, um, we, as a collective group, have been working very closely with UMass, um, for that very reason, to collect as much data as we can, and the, um, the mock-up that's on the Tremont Street Wainio bogs is being studied by this group and by, by UMass, who's leading the study, um, in addition to the, um, um, panels they have there. I mean, there are other projects outside of Massachusetts-
Yeah.
But not related necessarily to cranberry bog, so this, it's a bit unique, um, with the bogs.
You might have to go to Wisconsin.
Yeah. Yeah, I wonder if they have any.
Wisconsin, Canada.
I don't think so. Nope, it would mess with the efficiency of the harvest. So that's, that's the general presentation, and, um, I'll look for, look forward to Fussin' O'Neill's comments, and we can go from there, if anybody else has any other questions, we'll try to answer them.
How many residents, uh, does this impact, uh, that are but, uh, that you're gonna have to deal with for screening?
Um, so there, I didn't count the number that are in here, but, I mean, if you flip through our package, you'll see a number of affidavits from the abutters, the direct abutters on the side of Rochester Road.
Mm-hmm.
Um, roughly from twenty-four, number twenty-four, which is the Shores residence, all the way down to sixty. Sixty's not really a, a house, but in the vicinity of that. So we've spoken to all those folks already.
To reduce the setbacks, or?
And to talk about screening.
And screening?
Yes.
Okay.
We developed our screening plan based solely on our discussions with the residential abutters.
Okay.
And so where they, there would only be even numbers, right?
Yes, yep, that's right.
Okay, so we'll, we'll talk about that, uh, we'll see that when we go, go out for the site.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's better just to look at it, honestly, because in a couple areas, there's a significant grade change. And, you know, a, a long expanse of wooded area on the adjacent properties, I mean, from, from the, um, cranberry bog site, you can't even see some of the houses looking back, it's, it's pretty interesting. So it's a, it's definitely a mix.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, you know, we've talked to those folks, Adam has met with them, um, and that's how we produce the landscape plan.
Okay, that's good.
Did all the abutters get back to you?
I believe so, yeah, I believe so.
How many acres is the project, and then the, the megawatts, too?
Um, it's about twenty acres, and the megawatts, it's about one megawatt AC, which is, I know we always have this conversation, it's, it's confusing, but, um, it equates to about 3.3 megawatts DC. Um, and there is battery storage proposed as part of this project, that's all of these projects have now going forward. Similarly to our Tremont Street project, um, which is different from your, the, our preliminary print, our original plan set, we did the same thing, where we took the one, um, singular equipment pad and battery storage area and divided it, one for each of the three properties. So that will be one of the updates that you'll see in the supplemental set.
So there will be three?
Correct, yep, smaller, just separated out.
Three locations, not one?
Correct, yep, one on each site.
Is, so there's three battery storage locations, is there three interconnection locations, or is it all ultimately tied in to the grid?
No, it's, it's one, it's one location, yeah, like, much like the other project. That's so regulated, that we have to just go where they, wherever source tells us.
Doing the even now, since I came up with nineteen for you.
Okay, thank you, I'll, I'll double-check that.
Alright, any other questions by the board members? Uh, seeing none, is there anyone in the, out in the audience that has any questions? Alright, seeing none, uh, I think this hasn't ways to go yet, so- I think this has a ways to go yet, so let's look at a time for a site visit. And when would us, when would you be able to take us on another field trip?
Adventure?
Yeah.
You tell me. I'm, I'm on it.
I mean, I think you got to, you're going to have to step it up and get us one of those ATBs or something, right? So, it's cool.
This is a very easy walk. It's, it's significantly smaller than the other site that we walked.
All right, so today's the tenth. Next meeting is the twenty-fourth. So, sometimes between the eleventh and the twenty-fourth.
Not after six PM or before seven AM.
It's getting darker.
It's getting dark quick. Boy, it's like daily, we're losing five to ten minutes, I think.
Yep.
Never get used to that, even at my age.
No, I don't.
All right. Jen, I know that sometime, well, I guess everybody has times. When, when would be a good time?
Honestly, looking at the schedule, it's so crazy with back to school. I have a feeling that we'll be doing our, our own thing.
A dual walk?
Yeah.
At, at dual times?
I mean, I'd have to tell you twenty days in times, that wouldn't work. So, it would probably be easier for you guys to go, which...
Yeah, why don't we plan it for the majority? And then if you can make that, great. If not, you can just email me, and we can scoot out there.
Okay. Okay. Gentlemen to my left.
Looking for next week?
Okay, let's start with next week. Is there a good time next week? And then we also have to talk to Jim about this, too.
Is Tuesday not a good night?
The seventeenth? Oh, see, today's the tenth. So, next Tuesday would be the seventeenth.
I'm only around on Monday that week.
You're only on Monday, so you would be available the sixteenth?
Yep.
I would make myself available on Monday, then, if you can be available.
I can be available.
Okay, so that's, that's three of us.
Three of us.
Can you make it on Monday?
I can do it as long as I'm home by two thirty.
I don't know, it all depends upon, see, Jim, you're going to be home, so...
Yep, I'm, I'm fine all day.
So, so it's up to you, if you take a...
What time works for Jen? Because I can just leave the job.
I can be there at probably eight...
I'm local on Monday.
Eight-thirty after she gets on the bus, and I just have to be home by two thirty.
Hopefully, it won't take that long.
How long do you think it'll take? About an hour, or?
An hour, yeah, yeah.
So...
If that...
Do you, do you want to get it out of the...
Do you want to do it first thing in the morning? Or do you want to do it after lunch? First thing in the morning?
Sounds good, yeah.
Do you want to say...
Rather than not break away from something and start.
Well, eight-thirty, so nine would be a little bit more of a buffer.
Nine would be good?
Preferable to eight-thirty.
Nine AM, Monday morning, the sixteenth?
Are we going to chime this into the minute? Nine, nine is great for me.
Nine AM?
That work for you?
I'm available when my board is available.
Wow.
All right.
So, ninety, okay, so ninety. And so, what address?
Let's use sixty Rochester Road. There's plenty of room to pull in. It's a, it's an entrance, there's a Morton building on the right as you pull in, and a residence on the left.
And you're going to stop at the Berry Guys first? And pick up sandwiches?
Oh, I need to, I need to be careful with that.
Excellent breakfast sandwiches. That would be, I mean, really, the Wainio's really should be like throwing out some sandwiches there.
All right, and so Jim said, and we'll, if you can send some emails out, you know, especially to Will.
So, that's nine AM on the sixteenth?
So...
Sixty Rochester, right?
So, meet nine AM, Monday, the September sixteenth, at sixty Rochester Road.
All right, so I'll make a motion for us to do a site walk at nine AM. And what address are we going to use? Sixty Rochester Road?
Yep.
To look at the application of Nexon Energy LLC? Did I get that right?
Did.
On September the sixteenth.
On September the sixteenth.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, those in favor?
Aye.
So, we will see you there, Sarah. And we'll see if we can get Will to, to join us.
Okay. That would be great.
Did we have to close the public hearing first?
No, 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 we're going to leave it open, because we have a ways to go.
And we will be continuing to the twenty...
Oh, that's right, okay. And then, yeah, we need a motion to continue the public hearing to seven o'clock, September twenty-fourth.
Do I hear? Make a motion to continue the public hearing on the application of Nexon Energy LLC to September twenty-fourth, at seven PM.
I'll second that.
Yeah, motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Great. Thank you all.
Okay, good night.
If anything changes, Jim can just email me about the site visit.
Okay, yes.
Otherwise, we'll see you there.
So, on this next one, Jim, I think we'll open the public hearing and then continue it.
Which one is this?
Uh, this is, uh... Borrego, nineteen C Ward Street.
Actually, Borrego wanted to just go ahead and continue it.
We haven't opened it up yet. We could just...
Do you have to open it up? Or can you just continue?
I don't know how we've been doing this.
We just voted continue.
Just voted?
When they requested in the past.
Okay, so we can just vote to continue, and I don't, okay, so we won't open it up?
Right, they submitted a written request to continue to the next meeting.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to continue the meeting on the application of Borrego Solar Systems to September twenty-fourth at seven.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion to continue the application of Borrego Solar Systems located at nineteen C Ward Street in Carver to September twenty-fourth at seven o'clock. So, we have motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so next, we have, under other business, they have planning board member notes. Does anybody have anything that they want to say tonight? All right, planning director notes.
I have nothing.
Okay, we have the minutes of August twenty-seventh, twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen. Have you carefully looked over those minutes?
I did see, I did read mine earlier. Did you get a chance to?
Oh, oh, yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as they are.
Oh, no, no, there's a, there's a whole lot of red.
All right.
And not content-wise, but like administrative-wise. In the present, it has, it has Jim Walsh as a member of the board. And it has Kevin listed twice.
I think that, haven't we come up with that? That's, it's good that you caught that, but haven't we come up with that? Some kind of computer thing that's going on? Because sometimes it doesn't do Jim.
No, no, this is different, because, yeah, well...
Sometimes it doesn't do Jim, right?
Yeah, no, you're, you're right. That's when she was doing it, and the word document was...
I feel like it tracks changes when somebody prints it off or somebody does something with it. Is this, is this my minutes, or is this from the last meeting?
No, this is, this is from the last meeting when someone else was doing it.
So, it might have something to do with, there's an actual option to track changes. So, it might be that...
Because it was a different...
Yeah.
Different person doing it.
That they're doing that. Usually, it shows it, it redlined, though, when you track changes.
Which it didn't this time, because I, I had talked to Stephen about that. I could open it once, and there was no red, and it was correct. And I opened it again, and there, there was. So, I, do you guys have the minutes in front of you? Do you see what I'm seeing?
I thought it was agreed they were going to send it as a PDF file now.
I'm not sure what it was. I just know that it had Jim as a member, it had Kevin twice.
They sent it as a PDF file, I think it was, or did that tracking?
Oh, because Jim was the, um, the chair. I'm right.
It has him as a member.
Oh, Jim, no.
Yeah, because then on, on most of the votes, it says that they were passed unanimously six-oh, which is not correct. There were only four of us there, because Bruce wasn't there. So, every vote listed as six-oh should be four-oh. And there was a five-oh, that should be a three-oh.
All right, we can...
So, you have those changes marked up on red? Could you give them to Susan and then we can...
I don't, I don't even have the file.
I'll email it to Jim.
No, because it was a different, it was a different woman, remember?
Yeah, it was. So, I'll email this to Jim. It's, again, it's all, it's the technical stuff on here. It's not so much content. The only content that I thought we should add was down in part I, planning director notes, when it talks about the subdivision and the sign getting taken, it never mentions Yellow Brick Road. So, when you read it, you're like, what subdivision is this talking about?
Oh, okay.
So, I just think, I think Yellow Brick Road needs to be added there. Otherwise, it's, it's the, the numbers and the basics.
The Yellow Brick Road.
Yeah, okay, all right, all right. Well, see, see, you had that changed, too. So, I can email these to you.
Oh, we don't want the munchkins coming up.
So, I would, I would make a motion to table the minutes of August twenty-seventh to September twenty-fourth to allow time to make the...
Clerical.
Yes.
Okay, that sounds fine.
I'll second that.
So, we have a motion, a second, to table the minutes of August twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen. I don't think you have to vote on this, but we can. Until the clerical error is corrected. Those in favor?
Aye.